The first one, and September the seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, in council chambers, and it's four P.M. So, first of all, I will read a statement of the chair. This public hearing is convened pursuant to section four six four of the Local Government Act, R.S.B.C., two thousand and fifteen, to allow the public to make representation to council respecting matters contained in a zoning amendment bylaw, number one zero eight five dot one one one, two thousand and eighteen. Every person present who believes their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. When speaking, please proceed to the microphone and commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. If they wish, members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. In accordance with the council, proceed your bylaw. Presentations by members of the public shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes each. If a person has additional information that he is unable to provide within that timeframe, he shall be given further opportunity to address council after all other interested members of the public have been heard a first time. Please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion during this public hearing so that we may ensure as impartial a hearing as possible. After this public hearing is adjourned, council members will not speak to the public on this matter until the matter has been dealt with at a public meeting. After this public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. And I will confirm that the advertising and posting requirements have been followed. Notice of this public hearing was given in accordance with the Local Government Act and the Community Charter by distributing the notices follows. Publishing in two consecutive editions of the Asousias Times on September the fifth and September the twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Placing the notice on the bulletin boards in the town hall and Planning and Development Services Department on September the fifth. Posting the notice on the town's website on September the fifth and distributing via E-News on September the seventh, two thousand and eighteen. And a summary of the staff report. The purpose of this meeting is to seek public input in on zoning bylaw amendment, number one zero five five dot one one one, two thousand and eighteen, which received first and second readings on September the fourth, two thousand and eighteen. This zoning amendment bylaw proposes to allow for a drive-through car wash, oil change, as a site-specific use in the C-two shopping center commercial zone. And I will now ask Ms. McKay to give us the zoning report.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So, as mentioned, the, this report is respective property at nine one four one Main Street. The owner is Century Twenty-One Resources. The applicant for this proposal is Hart Buckendall. And the purpose of this report is to just request that council consider this zoning amendment. With respect to site context and the proposal, the applicant is proposing to build a drive-through car wash and oil change service station in the Gateway Plaza. The proposed oil change and car wash building will be located between the Dollar Store and the Plaza entrance, oops, sorry, on Highway three. The proposed car wash and oil change service station location is indicated in the map, and that's currently vacant and unpaved, and the car wash will be automated. The text amendment is required, as a car wash slash oil change service station is not currently a permitted use in the C-two shopping center commercial zone. This type of business is permitted under the C-three highway commercial zone. The C-one downtown commercial zone also permits a car wash but prohibits the use on C-one zone properties that abut Main Street. In accordance with the plan's commercial policies, the official community plan's commercial policy, section ten point five, shopping center and service commercial uses should be appropriately directed to general commercial designated properties. General commercial designated properties consist of the following land use categories: shopping center commercial, service commercial, and neighborhood commercial. Commercial developments are subject to the commercial development permit area. The Gateway Plaza is associated with a two thousand and three development permit. The current proposal for the car wash slash oil change service station will necessitate a new development permit. The applicant has provided renderings for the proposed building. Additional information is still required. Analysis: The proposed building is of a smaller scale than the four existing commercial buildings in the Gateway Plaza and will utilize vacant undeveloped commercial space. The owner does not anticipate the business will generate enough traffic to become an issue, and due to the nature of the drive-through business and its location in a commercial plaza, customer parking will not be of a concern. Staff note that there is currently one car wash business operating in Asousias. There are a few automotive repair shops that can provide oil change service in town, but none in proximity to Highway three and ninety-seven intersection. The proposed land use would take advantage of the property's strategic location, being situated at the gateway of two provincial highways, across from the town's tourist center, as well as being in close proximity to four service stations. As such, the site-specific zoning proposes a land use commonly associated with highway commercial destination and would service both the traveling public and local residents. The applicant has stated that used oil from the oil change business would be sent off-site for recycling and disposal, thereby limiting the impact on the environment. Staff note that the applicant will have to submit mechanical drawings with specifications as part of the development permit and the building permit process, which will provide details associated with the disposal and containment of wastewater and waste oil generated by the proposed business. Staff recommends approval, as the proposed rezoning will enable a new business to be established in the town gateway entrance, providing service to both residents and the traveling public. The business will also be established in a vacant unused portion of the commercial plaza. Planning staff is of the belief that use is appropriate for the location. With respect to implications to the community, to promote an attractive mix of complementary businesses to benefit the community and provide service year-round and support continued commercial growth within a limited land base, organizationally, bylaw adoption will be placed on hold until a commercial development permit application is received and reviewed by the director. There are no impacts to the budget associated with this report. Processing the development permit will be the next step in the process. Town policy for commercial growth includes avoiding sprawl, development, and conversion of agricultural land by promoting highest and best uses of our available commercial properties and strengthening Asousias as a regional service center. Pardon me. There are options for councils follows. That council convenes into a special open meeting following the public hearing and gives third reading to zoning amendment bylaw, number one zero eight five point one one one, two thousand and eighteen. Option two, council defers third reading of the bylaw until later date. Option three, council requests further revisions to the bylaw before proceeding. And option four, council recommends any other action deemed appropriate. And depending on the input received at this public hearing, staff recommend option one, which is that council convenes into a special meeting and gives third reading. Thank you, Mayor McCordough.
Thank you very much. So, I'm going back to the order that we have things, and we have received two items of correspondence. One, two letters. One is from Michael Ryan, and I believe he would prefer, rather than me read this, that he is going to present his, and another one from Roger and Carol Taylor. Are either of those people here? All right, so that I will read this one. This is, please come in and have a seat if you like. Dear Ms. McKay, this is in regard to zoning amendment bylaw one zero eight five dot one one one, two thousand and eighteen. I am very much in favor of adding these new businesses in Asousias. My reason for writing and my cause for concern deals with the increased vehicular traffic which will occur in Gateway Square, most notably the issues of egress from the square to southbound Highway ninety-seven. I understand that traffic issues concerning Highway ninety-seven and Highway three are provincially controlled. However, I wish to suggest that the increased vehicular traffic to the square, which will most certainly follow this project, provides an opportunity for our town and our project developer to jointly approach the Ministry of Transportation to recommend changes to the intersection of ninety-seven and Eagle Court. A written explanation of traffic movement in and out of the plaza would be lengthy. However, anyone who has lived in Asousias for any period of time understands the issues. For this reason, I will not describe the traffic issues around each entrance, but rather mention only two points. Number one, some of the main areas of our town's current residential growth are an area south of Gateway Square and accessed via Highway ninety-seven. As new homes are built and the new residents access Gateway Square, an increasing number of them will join the present residents who are frustrated in their inability to go south from the square onto Highway ninety-seven. Their only option has been to exit the plaza at southbound on Highway three, go through residential streets, Heron and Seventy-fourth, to reach Highway ninety-seven, where they can turn left, southbound. This has the detrimental effect of increasing traffic through these residential areas, a safety issue, before allowing vehicles to finally make that left turn onto the main highway. This traffic will certainly increase when the new businesses are in place in the square. The traffic solution to all this would be to enable left turns from Eagle Court onto southbound Highway ninety-seven. True, this is an issue for the Ministry of Transportation, but they will address this only if a case is made for doing so. And the best groups to present this case are the town of Asousias and the project developer. At the best, and the best time to do this is now, when the issue can be presented as one concerning safety in light of the increased traffic flow. Number two, my second point concerns the single lane access to the parking within Gateway Square from Eagle Court. It is the location of accidents waiting to happen. It is, it's presently is essentially a one-lane curved alley which sometimes is blocked by delivery trucks. The wriggling of vehicles through this narrow and poorly designed route should be addressed now, especially in the light of the increased traffic the new businesses will bring. That's from Roger Taylor. So, I am going to ask the applicant if, if he would like to make a presentation at the microphone. Mr. Buckendall, would you like to?
Yes, Your Worship.
Thank you. Come up.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and councilors. We're pleased to be able to provide a service to Asousias that we presently do not have. The car wash is different than the ones we have in Asousias. It's touchless, and it is in conjunction with what most car washes nowadays have with the quick oil change, is that you get a ticket, and after your oil change, you can go through, and hence, we have that. This car wash is different than most in another way. There is only one bay. Most car washes have two, three, four bays, but the study that was done indicates that Asousias with the population we have doesn't justify more than one bay. And one bay would be viable as a business project where if you have two bays and have employees for it, and it's not fully busy, it's not viable. The population base for most places that have a car wash and an oil change is a population of at least ten thousand people. And even with the rural area and other places that they can do oil changes now, it's, it's one bay was decided is the best. Also, it leaves more room in the area that's now presently an empty gravel parking lot for the development and more room for other people, like the Dollar Store, to have access through the back, through the corridor, which it was designed in such a way that trucks could still get through there. And we've made arrangements and talked to the disposal people, and they said, "That's not going to be a problem. They're quite willing to come out earlier in the morning to do bins and what have you to least disrupt any of the businesses with what we have to do for, in keeping order in that." I can't disagree with the letter that you just read. We all know that's a problem. I don't know what a developer can do to assist in that, but if there is anything that can be done to assist, to make any kind of changes, I mean, I get as frustrated as everybody else having to drive around like she's talking about in that letter, but it doesn't affect, I don't think, what we're doing as a car wash and as a quick-lube place. The experience is, if you have more than three people waiting in a, in a quick-lube, they drive away and they come back at another time, because nobody wants to wait more than three cars. Our design allows for a lot more than three cars to play it safe, but in reality, there won't be that many people. And we've taken into consideration the Dollar Store having trucking. And one of the things we wanted to look at, and it may require some permission from the town in the future, is to continue the alley in that back behind the Dollar Store and tie into the outlet at the Credit Union so that the trucks that come through could just do a straight through. But that can be done, and it's something that's possible to do. It's just a question of, I don't know if there's zoning bylaws or anything, but certainly in the future, that could be something that could be dealt with if there's a problem. So, there is an ace in the hat for dealing with issues like that, should they arise, to be able to get traffic to move through better than having to back out of the alley. So, I think it's a good project for Asousias. I've been working a long time with the developer, trying to get him to do something in Asousias with those spots, and we're, we're going to be very pleased to do so. We have an applicant that wants to run it, who's already in the car wash business and quick-lube business, so we have a qualified person that's keen to go if this project gets the green light from council. And we're hopeful we do. And if there are any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess the question is, when you mentioned about trucks going behind, say, the Dollar Store at this time, how do you perceive them getting their deliveries if this moves forward with your development?
Same way as they're getting them now. It's still, they're still driving in from that side, and they will have access through the driveway, which is going to be widened out. I believe the diagram that you have, we've made a change since then, where it goes around the corner when it kind of straightens out to go behind the buildings, you'll see that there's a landscaped area. We plan on eliminating that landscaped area, widening it off, so that the trucks that do go back there will have an easier, I mean, going in is not so hard, but it's pretty tough backing a truck out. So, we're going to make provision that it's much easier, and we've talked to a trucker, and the trucker said, "There's no problem doing this, but if they had a little more room, it'd be a lot easier." So, we're, we're going to cooperate with whatever there is that we need to do to make this thing happen, along with cooperating with the other businesses that are in, in our, I mean, it's to our benefit.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Youngberg.
Hi. Thanks, Mayor McCordough, and to you, sir, with another development on your books. I just really have some concerns about the, the laneway. If, in fact, we could push that laneway ahead in a priority so that you can actually go in and follow right behind the Dollar Store and go right out by Interior Savings, if that would ever be possible, because if you get in a lineup going into the car wash or into the oil change, and you're three deep, and you change your mind, and you want to back up, I don't know how you're going to do that.
It'll be, it's wide enough for two cars, so to address that, there is, there is a way of getting out of it.
So, you could get out?
You can get out.
Yeah.
We've made provision for that. If somebody changes their mind, or they can pull out through the laneway between the Dollar Store and the car wash.
Well, I see.
There's a laneway there that they can go forward.
Right. That is going to be a laneway where the little cars park?
Yes. Yeah, we've, we've got it wide enough that a car can easily go through there, but not a garbage truck or something like that, but for cars or pickup trucks, they, they can make it through there.
Just another question to Ms. McKay is, I'm wondering if we can address the Ministry of Transportation based on this development, and maybe put some pressure on them about that left and right turn going onto Highway ninety-seven. I'm just sort of thinking out loud.
Thank you, Counselor Youngberg, through the chair. We can certainly have that conversation. I think because we're moving into reviewing our official community plan in the coming year, that that is the ideal time to discuss long-term transportation needs of our community. So, I think as we, if we have that conversation with the ministry during that time, it would really be appropriate, but we can certainly flag this issue at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Buckendall, for presenting that.
Thank you.
For answering those. Thank, and actually, at the end, if you, if, once we hear from other people, if you would like to speak again, you certainly can, if they have questions that you could answer.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, now, we're going to go to a, to public presentations, and as I've said, they would be for five minutes, please, and we will be, we will be keeping track of that. And thank you very much. And the, and the first person is Mr. Durat. Would you like to come up, please, to the microphone? State your name and address, please.
My name is Jacob Durat, and I live at eight nine two one, one twenty-second Avenue, two kilometers north of the North Limito Town of Asousias. Madam Mayor and esteemed councilors, I, I spoke to Ms. McKay today after I had already printed a five-page document with some spelling errors which I've corrected. I was under the impression that there was also a development permit hearing this afternoon for the Kentucky Fried Chicken. In other municipalities, there is normally a development permit hearing. So, this document is not kosher, is not hundred percent, but what I've done here, I have first given a page and a half or so of almost a primer on traffic engineering. My understanding, I've been a professional civil engineer for almost fifty-three years, and a substantial part of my career has dealt with traffic engineering and transportation planning issues, starting with a consulting firm in Calgary that doesn't exist anymore in nineteen seventy-nine. For almost thirty years, I was a member of I.T.E., Internet Institute of Transportation Engineers, attending their conference and even presenting three conference papers, one in Halifax, one in Sacramento, and one in Mesa. I would like to speak to you professionally against the zoning application. I cannot do that on a development permit, because I want to speak to that afterwards, if possible.
I don't think you can, actually.
Okay. Then I want to mention now, that I want to mention upfront then, that you, as mayor, have the right to bring that development permit back to council. It is seldom done, but only the mayor has the privilege to do that.
I understand that.
And maybe on the basis of this, you may be tempted to do that. I hope so. I have objections, and they are based on six specific transportation engineering parameters for a good site development: site access, traffic circulation, traffic generation, traffic classification, parking lot layout, and parking utilization. This is not rocket science, but good common sense. I believe that this, 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 these proposed projects do not make the grade, and therefore should be rejected by council. And I go on, I mention these things, and I say here, the bottom piece one, there should be a traffic impact study. That is the normal term for it. A developer provides a traffic impact study to show all these things, one, two, three, four, five, six. Nothing has been done on this one. That's bad. That's unacceptable. Now, I do not suggest to you that the developer should do this traffic impact study at this time, because, you know, consultants can be bored. Money talks. I would suggest that your council appoint a respectable, reputable consulting engineer. I'm not in, in the business of that anymore, that can do a traffic impact study for both the Kentucky Fried and the oil change. And you'll see proof of the pudding. It'll fail. So, I'll go into details, if you have the, 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 the plan on that screen, perhaps. Maybe I'll go over there. I go to specifics now. Because the staff report says that ensure a new commercial development is of quality design and is appropriately scaled to keep in with the town's evolving character and meanwhile fit with the character of existing commercial development just about, I agree with that, but this one doesn't do it. Specifics on the, oh, I'm on the wrong page, sorry, the car wash. My concerns are the following. It mentions, figure two, just about that one, shows that vehicles may enter the site by turning right just past the vegetated median. Four staff parking stalls will be provided in accordance with zoning bylaw parking requirement. There is no vegetated median. It's a boulevard, and it's on the inside of this curve. And this is uphill, this will restrict side distance. It's on-site, this, this is the median. This, this is a boulevard. Even a shrubbery there, you have less side distance, that's dangerous. You don't do that. Number two, the turning movement, this is too sharp for a car.
I know. Very steeping traffic.
Now, my tractor can do it, but my Jimmy cannot. My, my one-ton truck cannot, or three-quarter ton truck cannot do that. It's too sharp. Why, it will go into this lane. Now, this is where you go this way, that's traffic. This, this is a two-way road, on-site. This truck will go into that lane.
Time.
That's impossible.
Thank you. Mr. Durat, I'm sorry, but you've had five minutes.
I know.
So, I'm going to let the other people who have signed up speak. If you wish, and you have extra information, you can come back after.
But I'm moved, I know, but I want to say that, please don't do this. Please. Because it's not proper that, that parking stalls are taken up by a new developer while there are two stalls taken.
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much.
The official one.
And I will ask Mr. Michael Ryan to come up.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I think we're all going to find it hard to be within that five-minute term, so we may have a little merry-go-round here and just keep coming back.
Yes. Well, we keep track, and if you did have, if you had something more to add, you can after.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Well, I've studied the proposal and made several actual visits to, for detailed observation at the center, and I understand how the proposed development will operate. As a result, I'm convinced that the proposed oil change car wash is not appropriate for the proposed site. In my judgment, it will create problems of circulation of vehicles within the mall and at the right-in, right-out access to Highway three. It will also create additional hazards for pedestrians and wheelchair users at the mall. It's very important that developments in our community be evaluated against the town's recent age-friendly report that was still understudied by council, as well as the town's existing climate action plan. Customers who line up for an oil change or a car wash will likely leave their engines running. This is counter to our goal of not allowing engines to idle for more than ten seconds, as we're told in our little pamphlet. In fact, there is a single integrated drive-in line for both the oil change and the car wash, and conceivably, someone could be caught in the line waiting for an oil change while the other cars are having car washes. So, what do you do there? How long will an oil change take? How long will a car wash take? How long will the customers waiting in line have their engines running? Will Asousias remain carbon neutral? Will the wash water at the car wash be recycled and reused? Oh, I think important questions. The location of the development just inside the Highway three mall entrance will also present a hazard for pedestrians and wheelchair users who may be traveling on the sidewalk behind the Petro Canida Station on their way to the Dollar Store or the Interior Savings. They'll have to cross that Highway three access road to the mall only to find that sidewalk doesn't continue in front of the proposed development. In fact, if you look at the, at the drawing, the, the building goes further than, appears to go further than the sidewalk in front of the Dollar Store. So, I mean, you know, they're already on the road when they come in, because there are so many cuts and letdowns that do not exist. This is just going to exacerbate that. There has got to be a sidewalk in front of the proposed new service station to join with a sidewalk in front of the Dollar Store. Now, typically, an existing, an exiting a car wash takes about a car or a car and a half length, because you've got to take advantage of the dryer, you're coming out in the dry- You're coming out, and the dryer is getting the water off your car. And can this site provide an apron for a car wash to exit and also have a proper sidewalk? I'm not sure. But it's a crucial question that I think must be answered before the development is approved. Pedestrian and wheelchair users should not have to dodge cars coming from the proposed development to get to the credit union or the Dollar Store. It's also important to remember that not all patrons of the mall come by car. Many walk or ride bikes, and not all people with mobility issues use cars either. I was up there last week, and I saw three users on manual and power wheelchairs around the mall. And of course, as I say, there aren't enough letdowns in the right places. There are not marked, even though this has all kinds of marked sidewalks and crosswalks, they aren't really marked right now. And they must be, and they should be. And there should also be signage. Since new developments are proposed for the mall, there's got to be some additional work done to remedy initial oversights for pedestrian safety and wheelchair access. At the present, as I said, wheelchair users are forced to ride on parking surfaces due to the absence of key locations of curb cuts and letdowns that haven't been installed, and also where proper signage and road markings aren't present. And I have indicated in my written remarks about three or four places, and I hope that those will be, will be done regardless of the, of the future of this development. I think they're very, very important. Circulation of vehicles in the mall is going to be impacted adversely by the proposed oil change car wash development. The access road from Eagle Court has already been mentioned. It's very narrow, especially where it curves around that east corner of the source. And in the summer, we've got RVs and fifth-wheels that come in, and where there's no dedicated parking for them, so they find a spot by taking two, two or three spaces and, you know, do their shopping.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I think we, the five minutes is up. I'm going to continue on, and if there's something else that you wish to add after, we can certainly have you come back.
Thank you. I'd like to come back, yes. But if there are questions, I'll be happy to...
I just, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam McCordough. Thank you, Michael. Since you provided your concerns, something else happened today in council where we announced the formation of an accessibility and age-friendly committee. Does that give you a little more, does that put you a little more at ease as far as some of those challenges that you foresee and that they may be looked at by a committee like this?
Well, I'm happy, I knew you were going to, and I'm happy that you have made that decision. It does take committees a while to get into action and to, you know, get to know each other and to, to start dealing with things. And then for the things that they recommend to actually happen and be implemented, I think the things that I've, I've mentioned, and I don't know whether you have these in front of you yet or in your computers, but, you know, I made pretty clear that, you know, that these are pretty, they're pretty minor things in terms of making them happen, but they're, they're pretty crucial in terms of access. But yes, I'm pleased about that. I don't think I would hang my, my hopes on those, you know, because I think there are other issues as well about the actual service itself, and whether it should be there, or whether that's the wrong place for it. But, but I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam McCordough. So the in-and-out traffic on the, onto the highway that has been spoken of by yourself and the previous presenter, the problems on Eagle Court going in and out and possibility of accidents are circumstances that have existed in the past. They exist today, and they probably will continue to exist in the future. How is it that these businesses are going to impact that? I, I take a different point of view on, on this, and I understand that there will be an increase in the volume of traffic, but the problems are there, and I don't see them being related to the businesses that are going to, that are being proposed to put on this location. I take a different point of view, because we talked about it at the beginning of the presentation. This may be an opportunity for change. It may drive towards a solution to both of those, and certainly the one on highway, on the highway that goes, it's that weird triangular thing, and I can't, I don't even, I can't even imagine how that was developed in the beginning. But it is what it is. It does exist. And I'm wondering how these businesses are going to impact or make that situation any worse.
Well, I think, thank you for the question. I think that they will impact. The KFC is, is again, a drive-through around, within the mall, you know, around the building. There's going to be people who are coming out of there into the lanes, if you will, between the parking spaces. But the, the other one, I see a scenario for the, the right-in and right-out. I mean, I've seen also people take the right-out and make a left turn, which of course is, is not supposed to be done. That's why they have, they're made the way they are. But, you know, you've got somebody who, who is coming, who enters from Eagle Court, and they want to go to the credit union. Okay? So they're driving along there. Someone is coming out of having his car washed, and he's going there. Meantime, there's somebody who's coming into the mall from Highway 3 and wants to get gas as somebody else is leaving. I mean, you know, you've got, it's just chaos. Now, I didn't get to that, but I thank you for the question. And I've outlined that a bit in my written statement. But I mean, you know, if you just go there and, and think of the worst-case scenario where it's summer and it's hot, and people have got their air conditioning on, and they can't hear, and they don't see things very well because they're, they're tired, and you've got all these things coming together. So, you know, and plus, you know, you're already taking away some, even though you say there's a minimum number of parking spaces that are, that are going to be available, you've taken away a chunk of them with the, with the KFC. And people have, they, people go from end to end. I mean, personally, I used to go out Eagle Court, and, but I got tired of stopping at the stop sign and having people ahead of me who are making left turns. So now I, wherever I'm parked, I murk my way over to the right-out so I can go downtown. So, you know, we're all, we all, but we know it. And if you get somebody coming in there with their, their RV or their fifth-wheel that doesn't know it, then you don't want to be in the mall that day.
I think you just allowed him to finish his presentation.
I think so, too. Go ahead. Did you have another question?
No.
Okay. Can I just point out that really why we're here today, this rezoning is a land-use decision only? And when the development permit comes up, Ms. McKay will deal with all of these issues. And I think she probably is paying attention and taking notes right now to, to deal with some of the concerns that have been brought up. But definitely, this is just the land-use part of it. So on today's...
I appreciate that. And yet I think that there is, there is an overflow, and I really, you know, I'm, I'm, it's regrettable that we haven't been able to fill the existing buildings. But I have to say, my final word is, and then I won't have to get back in line, that I really don't think that this is the place for this service in this mall.
And we absolutely appreciate you taking the time to come and tell us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Youngberg had a question. Did you have a question, Mr. Ryan?
Ms. McKay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. I believe that Ministry of Transportation has been involved in, in these two developments, have they not?
Yes, that's correct. Well, the Ministry of Transportation isn't required to sign off on the Kentucky Fried Chicken, because it's not a development permit, it's not of a certain size that they would sign off on it, as long as the land use is consistent with OCP and zoning by law.
Okay.
But they will need to sign off on the car wash slash oil change, and they have already given their tentative approval of it during the initial referral.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So my assumption is now that we would allow somebody to come back and speak, Mrs. Hilsen, for five more minutes, and then we would ask the develop... No?
No.
Sorry.
First, you should be asking if there's anybody else that wishes to speak.
Okay. Is there, sorry, is there anyone else who would, wishes to speak on this that did not sign on the list? Okay. So now, I can, Mr. Durant, if you would like to have a few more minutes, you can, and then I will ask Mr. Buckindall to speak if he wishes. Okay?
I think Mr. Ryan said what, basically, almost the same thing in non-technical language. This is not a good thing. There's more I wanted to say. Turning movements. And if I can get the other drawing, the big one of the site, there's a huge problem on-site.
These are for development and conversations.
Traffic crossing on-site, right here, at the Kentucky Fried. This is an aisle. People will come out there. People want to go into this aisle, coming out of there. Doesn't work. Now, there, and there's also, the developer said, "This can be extended." Well, we have to design for an SU9 truck, a nine-meter on-box truck. You cannot make it around there.
Mr. Durant, I believe that we, we realize that, and I'm just going to interrupt you because we're just talking about the rezoning. We are not, we're not looking at the development yet, and I certainly understand your concern, and Mr. Ryan's, so...
And that is why I believe, I believe a development permit should also have a hearing like in other municipalities.
We're not talking about a development permit.
No, I know that. I know that. But, but if this is the only one, and the development permit does not have a hearing, that's not fair.
I am not sure.
It's not fair against existing tenants on the site.
Okay. Well, we, I understand your concerns, and I, we thank you for taking the time to present them.
You say you understand my concerns. You haven't read anything of this.
Well, you haven't given it to me, so I can't...
No, because time is up. We're in a circle.
Yes. So is there anything else that have, is, that you have not already mentioned that you would like to bring up? We're, we're keeping track of the time. Don't worry.
I cannot see the, okay, this is about the, the word shows in, in, in the staff report is correct, but the word opposite has been demonstrated. What says in the staff report, figure two shows, and it shows, demonstrates two verbs side by side, that vehicles may enter the site by turning right just past the vegetated median. It shows it, but it's not, it's demonstrated it won't work. Please listen to professionals. You can give this report, which is given over here, to any professional engineer, there's no traffic engineering. You'll probably likely most, agree with most of it.
Okay. Well, thank you, and we will certainly have a look at it. Thank you very much. Mr. Buckindall, would you like to speak again? You may. You have the, yes, please do.
You should be asking...
No, I think Mr. Ryan said that he had covered his and the questions. Am I correct? Thank you. Okay. So we'll just let Mr. Buckindall speak.
Thank you, Your Worship. There's been a few things that have been brought up, and they're not totally correct. When that subdivision was built, there was traffic design work done for the initial whole project in the assumption that all those lots that are now vacant will have something in them. So, and that was done by professionals and that are presently and currently still working in the industry. And things do change, and they take into account the size of the community, the number of people, and everything else. In this world, nothing is totally perfect. And I'm not going to say everything is perfect there. We know just through the conversations that there are some things there that are not perfect. But together, we try to work to make them better, and that's part of what we do as developers. I've been doing this for 43 years, in addition to having sat in a seat like you're sitting for 10 years. And I've heard both sides of it. And there always are people that are against everything that's being done, for whatever reason. And they come up with ideas that think, they think are better. We came and we did everything that we could possibly do. We hired professional people to do our layout. Your bylaw requires 108 parking spots. We have 108 parking spots, taking into account the new buildings, both of them. Right now, a good portion of the parking lot on the west side is being occupied by We don't have those spots for our mall right now. We have never lodged a complaint, being good community citizens. It seemed that it worked. There was always enough parking for the merchants. There was never a need to give them a notice and say, "Please don't park there anymore." We don't know with our development whether we're going to have to maybe give them notice. It's a possibility. And they've obviously been put on notice that that could happen, but we're not booting them out or having them towed away. But those are a lot of spots that right now aren't being used. If those people don't park there anymore, that will become vacant. So I think we've covered everything quite well. We're going to do our very best, and we're hopeful that this project will proceed. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Did you have a question?
No.
No? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam McCordough. I'd like to move that council convenes into a special open meeting following the public hearing and gives third reading to zoning amendment by law number 1085, dot 111, 2018.
Could you...
I think, I think, excuse me, have I made a mistake by not asking three times?
Yes.
I apologize. Before we go ahead with this, then, may I ask for the, I asked once, may I ask for the second time if there's anyone else who would like to speak? And for the third time, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Hearing none, we will continue on. And I apologize for that. You should have flagged me down when I was... Go ahead. And so you're making a motion?
Moving option number one.
And is there a second or for that?
I have a second.
Thank you. And we take a vote on that right now? Okey-dokey. Any, all in favor of the motion? That's covered, that's unanimous.